This is the graduation that people go. It's where the, um...
Do you have an announcement? Do you have an announcement someone to say something about?
Yep. Yep, because...
It's right across there. He said, "The day..." They come down and right beside Sunshine.
Like everybody else.
He used what?
Saying, "Sounds like everybody else."
Way back today.
Okay. Well, take it forward. You're great. You know what's up with trying to do?
I got it. I need this for the day.
Right. Okay. Well, I just, I've been meaning to ask you about that. I was like Cherry Avenue, Aces of Hearts.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Willis.
No.
Is your laptop here? Is your laptop here?
Yep. Yeah, right here.
Get my phone out of there.
I don't know if it's the same one or...
It's a big one.
We use the same phone.
Happy holidays, guys. Thank you very much. You are doing very well. Appreciate that. I like the note.
All this time. You still have the hot one.
Yeah.
Look at what you said. You gonna be watching this. Actually, you can get your chat.
Are you? Yes. Okay. So when we call you all, you're just gonna go down there so far.
Okay.
Blessings.
Sonic LA.
Do you announce the First Amendment?
Yes, at the end. After part three. We don't have a... All right, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, we were in a closed session that ran over, so we, um, apologize for the delay, but we are getting started now. Thank you all for, um, being here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um, Ms. Thomas, roll call, please.
Dr. Bellamy?
Here.
Ms. Hill?
Here.
Ms. Walker?
Present.
Mr. Signer?
Here.
Ms. Galvin?
Here.
Are there any announcements?
Yes, we have, um, a couple. Thank you for letting us visit and serve the residents' community of Charlottesville, Albemarle, the city space on Monday, November 25th. While on our visit, we had a total of 75 transactions. Of those, we had 51 driver identifications cards, where 44 were real IDs. And so this is in related to our DMV Connect. And the next opportunity to do that is on December 16th. Sorry, this is like a little bit disjointed. We also wanted to announce that while tonight, we'd originally planned to conduct interviews for our Police Civilian Review Board, we are going to be extending that application deadline for an additional 30 days. So we'll set, um, January 15th as, um, that revised deadline. And, um, all the applicants who have, um, applied to date do not need to do anything more. They are under consideration for this board. Certainly encourage others also to apply to that as well as the Measurements and Solutions Group, the Ridge Street Priority Neighborhood Task Force, and the CDGB Task Force for the Ridge Street Representative. So those are all, um, boards and commissions that we're extending the deadlines for until the middle of January.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Any other?
Good evening, everybody. I have an announcement or two announcements. One, for Mr. Alexander, the Second Harambe Family Events. So Harambe Family Events is a calendar that highlights African-American cultural activities in Charlottesville and surrounding areas. The calendar, created and designed by author, award winner, Mr. Alexander, presents countless events from January 2020 to December 2020. Will be available on Wednesday, December 18th, 2019. The Harambe Swahili, which means, or excuse me, which is Swahili for all pulled together, culture events object... Culture events objectives are to inspire and unify area citizens to communicate more effectively and create, maintain a positive environment for change and civility. The Harambe Family Event Calendar will be distributed throughout central Virginia, schools, churches, businesses, clubs, organizations, and social media, to name a few. The calendar sponsors are CAT, Charlottesville Area Transit, Wegmans, Blue Ridge Graphics, Carter Myers Automotive, University of Virginia Division for Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, and the Van Year Tree Company. So be sure to see Mr. Zan for this. Also, be sure to come out, if you can, on December 26th at 1:00 PM at the Jefferson School African American, African American Heritage Center for the Kwanzaa Celebration, which will be led by Ms. Maxine Holland, um, every year. I think this is the... How many years this is?
For a Kwanzaa?
Yeah, it's been several years she's done a celebration. I don't know. Too many. Not too many, but a whole lot. So she's, uh... Don't tell Ms. Holland I said that. Just kidding, I know she's watching. So every year, Ms. Holland pulls together a phenomenal Kwanzaa celebration, again this year, to take place on December 26th, starting at 1:00 PM at the Jefferson School African American Heritage Center, going out and show that. And then if you're free this Saturday, please come out to the Second Annual Sneaker Ball. We hope everybody can come out. This will take place 7:00 PM at the Doubletree Inn. All proceeds from the Sneaker Ball will go to the Toy Drive, which will take place this Sunday, the annual toy giveaway that we do. Um, that'll be on Sunday, starting at 2:00 PM at Townslers Park Rec Center. So we'll have somewhere around 200 toys, as well as several hundred coats for individuals who are in need. So y'all come on out Saturday. Again, come out Saturday. Again, come out Saturday to the Sneaker Ball. And again, all proceeds will go to the Toy Drive. When? You heard it. Harold, you nut. Anyway. So Harold's gonna be there dancing in his sneakers and his black tie, Harold Foley, representing with his chain. And it's gonna be a lot of fun. So y'all come on out. All right? Then last but not least, I'm sorry, uh, one more. And you made me forget. I'm gonna get in big trouble. I can't remember what the other announcement is, but yeah, that's that.
All right.
Let me get you that.
Anyone else with any announcements? Okay. And we don't have any proclamations today. Next, we have, um, presentations to outgoing councilors. Councilor Hill's gonna start.
We have three of our colleagues, which is the majority of us, that are spending our last evening up here in the dais. And as we've all come to experience, serving this city, especially during this time in its history, has been uniquely challenging. I want to thank each of you for the voices you have brought to the table, the resilience you have displayed, the experiences you have shared, and the time and energy you have committed to this community the last four years, and for Ms. Galvin, eight years. Each of you was leaving a void to be filled, including, but certainly not limited to, a drive for innovation, a commitment to our shared infrastructure, neighborhoods, and schools, and engendering a community-wide focus on equity. So we're gonna go one by one with each of you. And so, um, we'll just do a little intro. And then, um, Dr. Richardson and the mayor have something to present. And then let you guys each share a few of your parting thoughts. Mike Signer, from January 2016 until today, December 2019. Mr. Signer ran on the theme of one Charlottesville, which was meant to him that this small but mighty city, we are all in this together. The following are a few highlights from his four years serving in Charlottesville. Working with Georgetown University's Institute of Constitutional Advocacy and Protection to successfully sue the militia groups that involved us, invaded us, to prevent them from coming here again. Doubling spending on affordable housing in 2017, leading to the creation of over 200 new units of affordable housing after August 12th. Enacting the West Main Street Plan that will create safe bike lanes, quadruplet tree canopy, and add underground utilities while lowering building heights on West Main. Preventing the privatization of the Water Street Garage by straying strong through litigation. Implementing a regionalism plan with Albemarle County, including enacting five memorandums of understanding on key policy areas. Expanding the technology tax credit from five to seven years, putting Charlottesville in first rank of Virginia cities for supporting the creative economy. Acting on the initiative to cut business and professional license fees for over 400 small businesses grossing between $50,000 and $100,000 a year. Creating an open data policy to allow people to hack our data and find out where we should improve. Helping to rehabilitate the daughters of Zion Cemetery with a special allocation of $80,000. And creating, welcoming greater Charlottesville to stand up for and support immigrants and refugees. Mr. Signer, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Signer. Doctor, Doctor Signer.
So if you...
We're gonna do one at a time, and then they're gonna speak, so...
You want him to speak after? Now?
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Or it's up to you, if you want to speak.
Oh.
If you're not ready, then we can do something.
All right. I don't, uh... I'll say something really quick. Sorry, I thought that we were gonna... Okay.
However you wanna do it.
I'll say something real quick. Uh, so I came on... Thank you very much, um, everyone. I came on to City Council with the experience of having been a neighborhood association president and a small business owner in the city, uh, working with smaller tech companies to help them grow and teaching at UVA. I never expected what happened in the four years that Kathy and Wes and I served. It has been a roller coaster ride, uh, to be sure. But with the ups and downs, it was the honor of a lifetime to serve as mayor first and to continue on council. And I am extremely grateful to my friends and my supporters, and yes, even critics, for caring enough about our democracy to pay attention and to all chime in to try and make our democracy work as best as it can. I have always been struck by the complete contradiction between the things that get the most media attention in a city with a lot of media and the things that we actually spend the most time working on. And in addition to these, uh, just a couple, as I was thinking about the four years, there were things that took dozens of hours. Um, and the, the three incoming councilors will undoubtedly note this as well, uh, that, that were not, that didn't rank in things like statues or what happened in 2017. Working on the courts agreement with Albemarle County, crafting an ordinance to allow for the culling of deer, which took a lot of time, putting elected officials on the board of the CACBB, and trying to allow, trying to allow mountain biking at Ragged Mountain. I want to close by thanking my wife, Emily, um, and our boys, William and Jacoby, for their love and support. And my councils here on, uh, my colleagues here on council and our staff for their dedication to our city. And I wish the incoming councilors well in their new roles, and will be cheering on from the sidelines as our city continues to strive to become a world-class city. Thank you, Mr. Signer. Yeah, that's nice stuff.
Are we gonna take pictures?
Yeah. Okay.
Sorry.
Okay, cousin, take me not towards you, okay? You gotta do like three shots.
Brian, move that chair.
So this, um, in recognition of your commitment to the citizens of the city of Charlottesville, and with great appreciation for your four years of dedicated service as a member of City Council.
Thank you very much.
Woo! Hug.
I was gonna get... Two others after me. Yeah, another one.
All right, this is on behalf of our staff. It says, "Thank you for your service and dedication to the city of Charlottesville from 2016 to 2019."
The actual key to the city. Thank you.
Don't open that.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
They should give you a big hug.
Yeah, they should.
Counselor Galvin. For two four-year terms, Ms. Galvin's platform has been to promote a greener, smarter, stronger city. The following are highlights of those eight years, including efforts that are still ongoing. A sustainable, greener city. Walkable, bikeable thoroughfares via the West Main Street and Belmont Bridge improvements. New multimodal street policies to promote walking, cycling, and taking the bus under the Streets That Work Plan that gave rise to our new multimodal standard and standards and design manual. Odor control at the Moores Creek Water Treatment Plant and relocation to the Wool Mills Pump Station. It's not all glorious. Cost allocation agreement for the water supply plan between the city, county, Albemarle County Service Authority, and the Rivaanau Water and Sewer Authority. Zoning reform to facilitate solar energy retrofits. Regional transit partnership to improve bus service in the region. Under the category of an effective proactive, AKA smarter city, the city's first strategic plan and objective evaluation process for our city manager. Four small area plans, including Strategic Investment Area, the Hydraulic Hillsdale, Cherry Avenue, and Star Hill Plans. Citywide zoning reform and keeping with an updated comprehensive plan and an affordable housing strategy being initiated. A long-range planning and design position being established. Hiring an experienced city manager. And under an equitable slash stronger city, the growing opportunity council work session and report to council, which led to the Downtown Job Center, a full-time city workforce specialist, and the growing opportunity job training programs. The New Hill Community Development Corporation to build African-American wealth. The General Education Development Test Preparation Course for public housing residents. Dedicated funding streams to the Charlottesville Affordable Housing Fund via Synthetic Tax Increment Finance District within the Strategic Investment Area. A form-based code within the SIA that requires onsite affordable dwelling units in exchange for height while promoting walkable, healthy, inclusive neighborhoods. The Neighborhood Family Health Center on Preston Avenue that provides health care to low-income residents with Ms. Holly Edwards. And the Food Justice Initiative to address food insecurity in the city. Ms. Galvin, thank you for your service.
Thank you. Oh, uh, well, um, eight years is a big chunk of one's life. And, um, I'm, I'm wearing this scarf tonight. It's a kata, and it was given to me from the Dalai Lama. In 2012, the first year of my service on City Council, the Dalai Lama visited Charlottesville. And if anyone's ever met anybody filled with exquisite joy, it is the Dalai Lama. And this scarf is what he gave to each and every one of us councilors as a sign of respect for our office and for the auspiciousness of the occasion and the culmination of his journey from where he was living in exile to this country. So it's kind of fitting tonight that this is the end of my journey on Charlottesville City Council after eight years. It's an auspicious occasion to see the ushering in of a new council. And I do wish that we begin that year with that feeling of welcome and joy and great promise so that we can be working together for a better world and a better city. My motto was greener, smarter, stronger. And it was all about making, uh, policies and initiatives that were equitable and sustainable all at the same time and building a government that would be effective and proactive in implementing those policies and initiatives. So with my colleagues, Wes and Mike, we have lived through some of the most horrible things anybody can live through in elected office, along with our city. But we're, we're coming through a new era. It feels like it's a positive auspicious time. And I wanna, I want to say, let us carry the joy of the kata so that we can, um, be treating each other with dignity and respect. So thank you very much, Mayor Walker and Vice Mayor Hill, for the generosity of, of your acknowledgement. And, uh, I look forward to working with you all, but on the other side of the dais moving forward. Thank you so much.
Man, you trying to make, you trying to make me...
So in recognition of your commitment to the citizens of the city of Charlottesville, Virginia, and with great appreciation for your eight years of dedicated service as a member of City Council.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you, everybody. Oh, oh, that's right. It's the key to the, to the city.
On behalf of myself and the employees for the entire city of Charlottesville, we want to thank you for your service.
Well, you're very welcome. And thank you for yours.
Appreciate it.
So... Okay. Sorry. Thank you.
We save the best for last.
The most trouble. Was it in?
All right. Dr. Bellamy.
Trouble man.
For the last four years, Wes has been a staunch advocate for equity in the Charlottesville community. The following are a few of the many initiatives that he has pursued in his four years on council: Creation and implementation of the 2017 Equity Package, which was nearly $4 million in aid to communities and populations in need; began housing, public housing redevelopment; led to creation of GED program in public housing; the creation of the Youth Opportunity Coordinator; realization of Tonsler Park; a grant for the African-American Heritage Center; and for the Ethnic Studies Course in Public Schools and Dialogue on Race, Part Two; writing the initial resolution for the Civilian Review Board in 2016; writing the resolution for the removal of Confederate statues and monuments; writing the resolution for the creation of the Minority Business Commission; writing the resolution for the Business Equity Fund; writing the resolution for the partnership between the city, CRHA, and Ting to bring forth high-speed fiber optic internet to public housing; writing the resolution for the creation of the City's Choice Housing Voucher Program in partnership with CRHA; and leading the effort for the creation of the Crossings Two to end chronic homelessness in the area; leading the effort for renaming of Preston Avenue for Confederate General to a local Black educator, Ms. Minor Preston. Thank you, Mr. Bellamy, Dr. Bellamy, for your service.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I didn't write anything because I didn't really know what to say. I really wasn't expecting to say much, whatever you say, Harold. Honestly, I just want to say thank you to everybody. The city has been absolutely, the city has been really, really good to me. The city has taught me a lot about myself, taught me a lot about people as a whole, and more than anything, I literally grew up with many of you. It hasn't always been easy, growing up in the public eye, quote unquote. I moved to Charlottesville when I was 22, got elected when I was 27, and I've been with you all kind of through the ups and the downs, but I'm very appreciative of not only my colleagues on council, from Mrs. Kristen Sekos, Mr. Bob Fenwick, our former city manager, Maurice Jones, to my current colleagues, Vice Mayor Hill, Mayor Walker, Mr. Signer, excuse me, Dr. Signer, and Ms. Galvin. We've been in the trenches together, and all of you have carried me through some very, very tough times. I've enjoyed some really highs and lows here in this city, but the highs always outweigh the lows. I really appreciate you all welcoming my wife and my children, and many of you being very nice to my family. I appreciate the people even who weren't so nice to our family, and the people who send ugly things to our house, or to work, or call, or whatever. All of it's taken in stride because all of it's been to create the change in this city that I think we've really needed. I think back to a couple of years ago, first coming on council, and people kind of expecting certain things. I remember when we were talking about the statue stuff and people looking at equity as a dirty word. I remember people saying that I was literally trying to tear down the city, or I was single-handedly dividing the city. I remember people yelling at me while I'm jogging, or people just being very rude and crass. But I also remember people in this very council chambers walking in here with signs saying, "Wes." I remember people being extremely supportive and giving me hugs in the street. I think about the many days in which people have sent me Instagram messages, or Facebook messages, or tweets, saying how much they support and appreciate the work. I remember and still appreciate the people who come to me pretty much every single day and acknowledge and just say thank you. And it's not, again, it hasn't been easy growing up with all of you, but we've done it. And I guess the last thing that I'll say is, is that I really consider Charlottesville ground zero for the awakening of the nation in many ways. What individuals thought was going to be for something very evil, and they thought was going to tear us down and break and divide us, literally has led to, with the work of many others, a revolution and an evolution. When you look around and you look at the real diversity, not only in our council with our first Black female mayor, for the first time ever having two Black people in the city council, or you look at the leadership on the school board, you look at many of the equity initiatives that this council and the prior council has pushed forward, when we look at the real money that we've put into addressing some of the systemic issues, when we look at the fact that across the country, people have literally just copied our resolution for moving the statues and move theirs in their cities all because of our work. When we look at people literally across the country, taking equity a lot more serious because of what we've gone through and what we've sacrificed, for me, just as one individual, that makes it worth it all. It's never been about one person, because one person is not bigger than the city. It's been about all of us, and we've accomplished something together that no one will ever be able to change. We may not be able to recognize it now because we're living in it, but five, 10, 15, 20 years from now, the nation, and the world for that matter, will remember this council, these people, and all of us for the change that we brought forth. So for that, appreciate y'all Charlottesville.
I do want to say something. There isn't much that gives me a lot of anxiety, right? But continuing this work without you actually does. It's reassuring to be able to look down at you and know that when I am tired and don't have much fight left, that you'll pick it up. So I'm actually sad when I'm not saying often about things, that you're not going to be here. And I'm a little worried, because with all the things that you just described, we are very far away from the goal, and we struggle daily to stay the course. So I, you know, I always have a quote, and I think these are some of the things that Marcus Garvey said, "The black skin is not a badge of shame, but rather a glorious symbol of national greatness." I think you blew through here, and again, like you said, it'll be five, 10, 15 years before people realize, but in every room that you were in, your focus has been to make sure that this community that you weren't even birthed in was better because you've been here. And not too many people can come somewhere and have the passion for a place that they weren't birthed from. And so I appreciate that of you. I appreciate that you sacrificed yourself and your family, and even the tug-of-war you played when making this final decision of what to run again, is whether you would be able to survive another term. And I hope that we know the sacrifice that we ask our leaders to make, that instead of them being able to continue to serve, they are struggling with whether their family will be able to survive their service. The conversation around race and equity, it's not easy, and we've been attempting to have these conversations forever. The history of this country, and we've been unsuccessful at healing it. And I think, I just want to tell you in front of everybody else that you're amazing, and I hope that no one ever questioned you in a way that ever made you doubt yourself. And I know that I am stronger in these rooms where people are trying to destroy us even as we do this work because of you, and I'm going to miss you. Marcus Garvey also said that chances never yet satisfy the hope of a suffering people. And thank you for not leaving the lives of Black citizens in Charlottesville and other citizens of color to chance.
So in recognition of your commitment to the citizens of the City of Charlottesville, Virginia, and with great appreciation for your four years of dedicated service as a member of city council.
Thank you.
This is on behalf of our workforce, and we just want to say thank you for all your services, a key to the city. Appreciate it.
Just want to say, we, we not having a funeral, we having a celebration tonight. We having a good time. We gonna enjoy our last meeting together. This has been a phenomenal experience with all of y'all, and I think we all should be really proud of the work that we've done. So we gonna go out with a bang, and we gonna get out before nine o'clock. So moved.
So Ms. Thomas, could you read the consent agenda, please? Oh, we'll do it after.
It's hard to follow. Consent agenda: A, minutes, October 21st, 2019, regular meeting; October 26th, special meeting; November 4th, special meeting. B, appropriation: reappropriation of funds from the Department of Human Services to the Department of Economic Development for the Home-to-Hope Program, $321,103.35, second reading. C, appropriation: Victim Witness Assistance Program Grant, $265,024, second reading. D, resolution: Capital Funding Transfer for the Rugby Avenue Trail Project, $19,501.90, one reading. E, resolution: Jefferson Area Regional Transit Partnership Memorandum of Understanding, one reading. F, resolution: Letter of Support for a 4-H Education Center to Receive State Funding for Essential Capital Safety Improvement Projects, one reading. G, resolutions: Home Energy Conservation Grant, Scope of Work Modifications, number one, resolution: Approving the Housing Voucher and Energy Efficiency Pilot; two, approving the Home Energy Conservation Grant Program Funding Agreement, both one reading. H, resolution: Alternate Appointment for Albemarle Charlottesville Regional Jail Authority and Blue Ridge Juvenile Detention Commission, one reading. I, resolution: Honorary Street Naming, Winnebago Way, one reading. J, ordinance: Amend Section 2-6 of the Charlottesville City Code to Add Christmas Eve Holiday, first of two readings. K, ordinance: Recreation Center Precinct Name Change to the Key Recreation Center Precinct, first of two readings.
Is there anyone who would like to speak on an item that's on the consent agenda? All right.
Mayor Walker, I would like to pull item I, the resolution on the honorary street naming of the Winnebago Way.
Let me, I'll second that. Are we going to discuss it later, or I just wanted to explain to the public that there was just some, there was a request from the Sister Cities Commission that they wanted to have the opportunity to discuss what was presented here in their next meeting, and then have it come forward to council in the next opportunity, which I was open to having.
My understanding is that in order to do that, we'd need to make a motion to table that item because it's being on the consent agenda for a vote. Am I correct?
Well, two things. Your, your current practice is you can either pull it for a separate vote, or your rules of council, if you pull the item from the consent agenda, it would go after your audit report for fiscal year 2019 for discussion.
That's fine.
And I would like to pull it for a separate vote.
I, I don't want to vote on it because I'm not voting against it. I just, I'm responding to the, the Sister City Commission request that it wasn't ready to be put on our agenda.
But I think that that was where probably did, there were some difference of opinion there, which is through the emails that we received.
Sure.
And even the initial communication that I had after it was removed from the agenda. And Dave is here, if.
Mayor Walker, my, my request still stands to pull it for.
Discussion later.
For discussion later.
Okay.
Well, I don't want to make people wait until the end of the agenda. We can just do it for a separate vote.
If, if the council is okay with going forward with the consent agenda without that item, and then voting to amend your agenda to place the Winnebago Street renaming after the consent agenda but before Community Matters, is that? And that, then you can have your discussion.
Or we can do it as the, before the transit.
Okay. Sure.
So I move to adopt a consent agenda without item I.
And to move item I.
And to move item I to the regular agenda.
Right after Community Matters.
Right after Community Matters.
Yeah, I'll second that.
All right. So we're just voting on that amendment, or?
The whole thing.
The whole thing.
Okay. All right. All right, please vote. All right.
Mayor Walker, I'm sorry, I apologize. I do have two other items, if I could say really briefly. Just, just really briefly, I apologize, colleagues, I meant to say this earlier. One being, just a quick update from the last CRHA meeting that took place this past Monday. The Charlottesville Housing Redevelopment Authority decided to proceed forth with exploring the option of the Crossings Two and Virginia Supportive Housing. There was a, will we describe it as a vote, Mr. Norris? I'm sorry. The sense of the commission to proceed forth. I know that there were some contingencies in terms of funding, so I just wanted to make sure you all were aware of that update. And then secondly, I forgot to say this earlier, but I guess this is my last meeting, we can, we can go a little out of order. I hope everyone can attend this Saturday at 10:00 a.m. at Washington Park. There'll be the official street renaming of Preston Avenue from General Preston, the Confederate soldier, to Ms. Assalee Preston. So again, that ceremony will kick off at 10:00 a.m. at Washington Park under the Casibo, and then you'll see the official plaque being placed onto Preston, yeah, onto Preston Avenue, redoing a wrong and making it right, in my personal opinion. So again, the community is invited. That's all.
Okay. All right, so next we have the city manager's response to the December 2nd meeting.
I only have two items. Tonight, Madam Mayor, Madam City Council, the public, one is pertaining to Ms. Hudson's request to have a discussion pertaining to the number of events that our Parks and Recreation Department can host on a daily basis. My assistant either has scheduled or is in the process of scheduling a meeting with her to be able to discuss that. And then the last item is Mr. Rose from our last meeting, who was here, reached out to me following our last meeting, and I responded to him. Yeah, and I responded to him in regards to his questions and concerns regarding the vandalism of statues in our parks. And that's all I have for this meeting.
Okay. All right, next we have the Community Matters, and the first person we have up is Myra Anderson. All right, next we have William Etwood. All right, next, we have William Atwood.
My name is Bill Atwood. I'm an architect in town. I have spoken on numerous occasions about 209 Maury Avenue, been on the record about Second West Street, these big projects with big money. I don't share Kathy, your assurances, that you spoke after I left. I don't think with a cartoon, basically for a side plan, that there's any insurance is that we understand what's going to happen. I do support you stating that you were comfortable with the buildings next to the smaller buildings. Obviously, historic houses of great concern, to some extent, because the current zoning for that piece of property is 27, 45 feet high. But I believe it will jump to 60 as they come in for an SGP, which will overwhelm the property. And I completely reject the concept that eventually this will be workforce housing. I mean, we have to stop saying these things, in my opinion, because it won't be. This will be the highest rent rate building for graduate students in this city. It will actually bump the average rent rate up. It is hot, hotspot for grad students. And I don't believe culturally, people who go to work want to live with college kids. So I think properties on the other side of town are away from university, more vulnerable. So I don't see that as meeting any of the housing stock goals. And I've said that from the beginning, and I'm here tonight, maybe not to Dalai Lama, but I'm here tonight to say, I just don't agree with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Kate Fraley?
I pass my question to Nancy Carpenter.
Tonight, I wanted to bring up the fact that you're having an audit report, and to remind you that last spring, when a lot of housing advocates were here and talking about the money that was being put into the chat, was only $800,000. That's what Mr. Murphy had in the budget that he presented to you. And your response to most of the advocates, and especially, I think Ms. Hill, you said specifically that if there is a budget surplus, it will be earmarked for the Charlottesville Area Housing Foundation. I'm here tonight to remind you of that conversation, because there's a lot going forth, there are a lot of advocates talking about what a tax rate could be, where that could provide monies and things like that. So I want to make sure that we don't forget what you all said you would do with a surplus. Now, I don't know if you're going to make, if there is a surplus, if there's going to be a vote on it tonight, whether to wait till the three new councilors get on, and so I hope that they will look at the historical record, because it's, you know, on the, you know, recording of this meeting last spring. I don't remember if it was March or April, but it was certainly discussed. The second thing I wanted to mention is that you're talking about a transportation plan, and I've heard a conversation about how like the Route 9 might come back and, you know, serve Grady Avenue and some of the stops that were taken away. And it really disturbs me that there were a lot of elderly people, especially Ms. Lewis, coming to this council time after time after time again, once that stop left, and advocating for the elderly people, advocating for the poor people, and advocating for the working class people to get those stops back. And now it seems that because there's some type of high-rise development going in, and all of a sudden, a new type of person coming in, perhaps someone that may not have a car, may have funds to, you know, support a lot of the activity that's along Preston Avenue in the center, that maybe that route's coming back, when reality says, I think, that that route should have been put back a long time ago. To move on to some other things, there is a new act that, or a new bill that was presented into the Senate, it's called the Evict Crisis, Eviction Crisis Act, that I hope you all will support by calling Kane and Warner and tell them to support this bill. Some of the things that it will do is to make a robust national emergency assistance fund that will help people who are at risk of their, losing their housing to be able to maintain it. It will put a lot of money into the Illegal Services Corporation to have a by-right representation, because we know that when someone is represented in council, or with council, that it can go better for them. There is also a tweet storm tomorrow called #DemDebate, to ask the Democratic debate moderators to put questions on the debate stage about affordable housing, which they have not opted to do, which is one of the most important, critical issues of this election. And Mr. Signer, I'm sorry, you failed as horribly as mayor.
So I just have one comment about Cat. So my interpretation of probably what's happening now is that we actually have a director, and we're getting accurate information about, I know, again, I've said this before, but Councilor Galvin and I, we were in an RTP meeting, and it was the first time that we heard about route changes from a consultant that had been hired, and we were never consulted on it. It was a part of a presentation. And so our RTP meeting, maybe two months ago, was the first time that I felt confident about the information that we were given about Cat. So I'm hoping that the changes that you all see moving forward is basically because we have somebody in the position that, you know, appears to know his stuff, and he is, you know, considering, you know, all the factors and having all the conversations. He was at a, the redevelopment meeting last week with CRHA, some far members, asked him a lot of questions, and told him that they intended to ask him a lot more. And so I just think it's probably the first that we'll be able to evaluate this in, you know, over the next year. But that's just what I feel about the past, since I've been on council.
And Mayor Walker, I'd just like to agree with the mayor that we have a director of the Charlotte Area Transit that now does have a lot of experience, does know how to use the numbers, knows when he doesn't have the numbers he needs, and is actually going to be making recommendations to revise routes, and that are based on what he observes as needs, and it's not, it's been a long time since we've had that level of expertise.
I just wanted to respond relative to the audit report, because there has been a few questions, and I did ask Dr. Richardson last week, that the surplus figures are not yet available to us, and so therefore, that allocation will not happen until our second meeting in January at the soonest.
Okay. All right. Tanisha Hudson?
Good evening, everyone. Happy holidays. I'm gonna be quick, for once in my life. The bus coverings, the shelter thing...
He's working on that.
Y'all working on that? Oh, all right. Okay.
He's just working on, you know, just evaluating...
Because I just might want to ride the bus, you know? I'm making this high.
I think he's been here last Thursday, it was 63 days, so we just give him a, give him a few more days, maybe.
What'd you say?
He's been working here.
Oh, all right. Okay, anyway, funding the CRB. Maybe in 2020, we can come to some type of agreement that we do fund that. I think it's important that we address the issues with the public and the police. It's really important that we compromise and get this done.
We already agreed to...
Fund everything?
No.
All right, yeah, no. Okay, we'll talk later. The bus routes, I agree with that. We need to put some of those bus routes back. Why do we not have a better, like, agreement with the county? Like, a lot of city workers, I mean, a lot of people that live in the city work in the county, like my grandmother being one, and where she live at. Like, she would have to take like three buses to get to work. She don't drive. So like, we need a better, like, overall public transportation system, and I think Paul is definitely fighting for that, Mr. Long in the back. But if we can't build them a new parking garage for the courthouse, then they need to come on with putting some money to get in Cat to expand beyond certain territories, I think, they need to put in. Because a lot of people are working, like Martha Jefferson, you know, Westminster, places like that at the tip of pantaps. Those buses come like every hour. It could be a better system, is what I'm saying.
We agree.
Okay. But anyway, happy holidays. I hope y'all enjoy, y'all give.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Walker, final eight. Again, the Regional Transit Partnership is actually going to be moving forward with getting some assistance to do just that, get the idea of what is going to be needed in order to increase the coverage, and we do need to increase the ridership, but it's to make it a much more efficient, effective regional system. And Mayor Walker and Diantha McKeel both worked on getting a cost agreement, a cost-sharing agreement, so that the county now knows how to estimate just how much it costs to get an extra route paid for through Cat, and that was revolutionary. That was never done before. There was no way for the county to understand how much it costs to expand surface into the county. So now that's a very fair process that we have, and that was another product of the Regional Transit Partnership. So the Regional Transit Partnership is still working with all the different players. That's John, that's UTS, that's Cat, that's Rideshare, but we're going to be, I won't be on it, but the RTP is going to be moving forward with coming up with the game plan to expand the coverage and how much it's going to cost. So it's...
And we did that MOU without the director on board, and I think there have been some comments about, and that's something else that he's looking at, too.
Tony Wash, 191 Brookwood Drive. Dr. Bellamy?
Yes, sir.
Dr. Signer? Mrs. Galvin? I want to thank you for the sacrifices, the service, and the dedication you have given the city and the citizens of Charlottesville. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Katrina Turner?
This is the end of the year, so I'm gonna come back to you all with the complaint I filed on two officers. First thing I want to say is I've been complaining for two and a half years, and I was wondering if any of y'all have even looked at any of the information I've given you, because right on this decision letter, it says that Brian O'Donnell, it says, "I listened to a recording made of the prosecution's recital of the terms of your guilty plea. I never pled guilty to anything." See, there's so many mistakes that were made in this complaint, that nobody, that people just refuse to look at these mistakes that are made. But y'all might can live with the mistakes that are made, but I can't. I'm gonna tell you about a mistake that was made in my life. One day, you see this picture? I carried him to the hospital one day. You see him? I carried this little boy to the hospital one day. Because, but because of that word, mistake, I never got to bring him home. UVA has this system called the Epic System, right? Where if you're taking a certain type of medicine, it kicks that medicine out the system. And if you're in the hospital, still after it kicks that medicine out, the doctor's supposed to put that medicine back in, right? For two and a half days, they didn't put my son's valium back in, and he went into seizures. And for the next month and a half, I had to watch my son die, seizing every day, because of mistake that was made, okay? So when I hear that these are just mistakes in this, mistakes to me are deadly. When I hear that word, mistake, it's deadly, because a mistake took my son's life. But guess what I was told? I'm so sorry for what your family is going through right now, but what happened to your son will help so many more people, because we're going to fix our system, because of what happened to your son. So how many more mistakes am I going to have to live with? How many? Why won't anybody just listen to the mistake that was made that night to me? Everything that's in these papers right here is proof. So when I hear mistakes in that, it'll help somebody else, how? If nobody is doing anything for me right now, how is it going to help anybody else? This is the mistake I live with every day that somebody made. He never came home to me. So when y'all think about mistakes, and y'all talk about mistakes, y'all look at this little boy right here. Y'all look at him, man. And next time you hear me, mistakes were made, you think about this little boy right here, who never came home because of mistake. Thank you.
Good evening, councillors, city manager, Mrs. Blair, Ms. Thomas. I'll be brief. Dr. Bellamy, Dr. Signer, Ms. Galvin, thank you so very much for your sacrifices, your incredible sacrifices, for your commitment and for your services to the city over the last four to eight years. I know that the road hasn't been easy, we have not always agreed, but I do appreciate the efforts and the passion that you brought to the positions and to the work that you Just a few other things. I would very much appreciate it, as we begin to move forward, Mayor Walker and Ms. Hill and the new councilors that'll be coming in, as we look at the surplus that may be available, if there's a dollar or a dime, that we earmark that towards affordable housing, that we look at transportation, as had been mentioned earlier, and that we also look towards the continued funding, towards fully funding the CRB, as was requested by the impounded members of such. I think that we also should declare ourselves as a sanctuary city, as some other communities have done, but in a different way. I think that we should declare ourselves a sanctuary city against monuments, statues, and memorials that glorify slaveholders, that lift up racists and rapists and traitors. So if that's something that we can move forward on our legislative agenda, that would be very much appreciated. Dr. Bellamy, you alluded earlier to a passage of Genesis 50 and 20. As for ye, you meant it for evil, but God turned it around for good, and as we sit here today. And I think that epitomizes your term on council. It embodies everything that you endured, and I truly appreciate it. And I truly appreciate all that you've stood for, all that you have brought to this community, all the compassion and passion that you try to bring forth for people who have been overlooked for so many years. It is truly very much appreciated. I don't think that the community realizes all that you put in or exactly how much we're going to miss the efforts that you brought forth. And I just want to publicly say to you, thank you very much. I always tell you, much love and much respect. And I too have grown with you and have gleaned much from you. And I just want to tell you how much I appreciate you. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Hello? Goodbye. 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 So I'm here today representing the People's Coalition. Two issues. One, I don't remember the CRB being funded at all for the two positions.
We didn't refund it one.
You did fund one?
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know, how much was it for?
Tom?
How much was it for?
The executive director position.
Yep, but I'm just asking, how much was it for?
I don't remember the dollar.
Okay. Secondly, we've been asking about the DMC, the Adult DMC, the study, when the meeting's going to happen, what's going to be the result of the DMC. Haven't heard anything about that.
Dr. Richardson updated last meeting on that.
Yeah. No, no, it was updated. It says it's going to be a meeting sometime in December.
It hasn't been set. They are waiting for the final draft from the consultants.
Okay.
For staff to review.
No, and it's not, I'm not poking at you all. I'm just saying that this report must have been out in July, if I'm not mistaken, right? And I know it's not, I know it's not city staff is the, because we did a FOIA and found out it was not the city staff. So I'm not poking at the city staff, I'm just saying that I'm letting people know that there is a report that's going to come out pertaining adult... DMC. Thank you. So please, folks, be aware of it because it talks about the criminal justice system and how black folks are being discriminated against in this system, which I think y'all paid like $150,000 to do the consulting, maybe?
What are you saying, we already knew that?
We already knew that.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. We already knew that. But for folks who didn't, who don't know, who's out there in TV land, this is coming. And so I hope folks can help the People's Coalition to organize around what we can do to change the criminal justice system in Charlottesville. But before I leave, Wes, Dr. Wes, Dr. Gavin, I mean, sorry.
No. I've gone to school, but they didn't give me a doctorate.
Maybe one day. Maybe one day. Dr. Signer, thank y'all for y'all's service. I know it was a hell of a way to go because we seen a lot coming through this. It's like a snowball hill. And right now, we dripping from that water. But thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I can sleep so good now.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
There's two more.
Hi, my name is Phil Mendez. I volunteered to be on the CRB. I just want to second the concern raised by the previous speaker regarding adequate compensation for the executive director of the CRB. That's got to be a fully professional position. If you're going to attract somebody good, if they're going to be respected within the community, you know, go for it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone else who would like?
My name is Chris Meyer. I'm the executive director of the local energy alliance program. On your consent agenda today, you guys approved a modification to a grant, the Home Energy Conservation Grant. It's appreciated that grant needed to be updated in order to allow us to better serve a lot of the clients, again, the low-income households, and get them the energy efficiency measures. Mr. Gathers here was a recent recipient, and I think, you know, if you have any questions about the quality of our work, we're doing a good job. We are accelerating the amount of households we are serving. There was a bit of a backlog, and I'm happy to say we went from 20 last year to 30 this year, and I'm expecting to serve another 45 or 50. And with the modification, with the new rental voucher pilot program, we are going to be able to also assist renters. I want to take off my executive director of leap hat and just make an observation as a citizen, 121 Oaklawn Court. Disappointed with the amount of senior leadership in the city government that seems to be receiving golden parachutes when they leave. I think it's the third one in recent history with Mr. Murphy that is now on administrative leave for 10 months. We're talking about $175,000 in salary that is, he's going to be getting for not working. I have no problem with him getting his pension, but again, the police chief, the former city manager, and now an assistant city manager or as a deputy city manager have all received basically 10 to 12 months of salary for not doing any work. This is money that, again, we've heard if there's a lot of needs in the community, $175,000 a pop for each one of these, and it seems like now it's a trend or precedent. So I would hope the city manager and/or the council can address this problem. It's not good compensation policy, nor do I think it's good leadership from it being demonstrated by those people who take those packages also. Thank you.
And I just have a quick comment. So we do have, you know, with conversations with the city attorney, he has stated that, you know, moving forward, he would not recommend those packages. We had a lot of discussions when this came up in July of 2018 about the contract. I will say I didn't vote for the contract, and I wouldn't vote for it today. I would like the public to know, though, that we did not increase Mr. Murphy's salary. That was one of the stipulations that council agreed on during the interim period, nor did he get a bonus for it. But the package that did come with the contract, I agree with you that it was excessive.
Madam Mayor? If we're going to get into this, there was a, and there's stuff we can't say about personnel matters, but there was a context for why this particular employee was able to negotiate for that package. And it had to do with, due to a lot of things that we, it would be hard to talk about, but if we needed to, we could. We were three days away from not having an emergency manager for the city. We didn't have a city manager in place. So what you're objecting to, totally agree. Would have loved to have voted against it myself, but we had no leverage to have a better deal with the person who was there negotiating. We didn't have an emergency manager in place when we were coming into the one-year anniversary of August 12th. And we had a difference on council amid all this. We could get deep into the facts on it. It's fine, we can all talk about the positions we had, but that was the context that led to that package being agreed to. I don't think anybody wanted to end up with that package, but we were in the context we were with this negotiation. I don't know what the negotiation was with Mr. Jones because that was an employee contract that went way back. And I don't, with Mr. Thomas, that's also a very different thing because that's also something that has been reported on, but that was a negotiated, that has been reported on. That also wasn't a contract. That was a settlement, and that's been reported on. So there are three very different contexts for all those things.
Mr. Blair, would you like to say anything? No?
Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
My name is Gloria Beard, and y'all know me by now. For one thing, I want to thank you all for putting off, hiring anybody, you know, and going to give more. Did you say y'all was going to review other people for the CRB board?
Yes, ma'am.
So I'm so happy that's happening because I was so worried. I mean, I prayed a lot about it. I said, because you have to have special people on that board, people that really care about the community. Because if you throw people in that's not going to actually do the work, that's work. I know, for a year I worked, and I learned a lot about, you know, just studying all this stuff. And so I was like, oh, my God, they're going to try to hurry up, and they're going to hire anybody, you know, not anybody, because I know you're going to interview. But it's got to take special people to care about the community. I care. I wouldn't run, but see, I have high blood pressure. I'll get upset. If people don't want to work, you know, I can't deal, I'm like at my church. You don't want to work, then you need to sit down. Because I have to go the extra mile. I did it when I worked in the hospital with patients. I went the extra mile. But I wasn't busy, I didn't mind going downstairs, getting the newspaper or pushing them out to the car. So I'm so happy about that. And another, I want to bring up something about this bus service. I just talked to a lady who had to catch the bus, and she's like I am kind of handicapped by walking. There are no seats. Did y'all know in some places, they have nowhere to sit down at the bus stops? These people, older people, if I had to walk from my house to the bus stop, it not only would it take me a while because of my, you know, disabilities, but when I got there, there wouldn't be no seat to sit on. What sense do that make? And somebody told me too, that on Cherry Avenue, they forgot a lot about their neighborhood. We got to do better. We do. People need, I mean, if you hired me, I'll go around and tell you what's going on in this community, what needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilors. I also want to echo all the words of appreciation and thanks for each of the outgoing councilors. I know it's a thankless job, and so thank you for your service.
Until now, Dave. You know very well.
That's right, that's right. We haven't always seen eye to eye, but I do appreciate your commitment to public service and to this community. I just wanted to shed a very little bit of light on the Winnebago way issue before you tonight. I'm speaking as a member of the Sister Cities Commission. Two or three years ago, the commission decided, one of the ways that we'd acknowledge the various sister cities that Charlottesville has around the world is by having honorary street renaming done in honor of each of those four sister cities. Last year, they did one for Bezonsan, our sister city in France. This year, the commission specifically agreed to do one to honor Winnebago, our sister city in Ghana. And so the Winnebago representative on the Sister Cities Commission set forth to put together the application, talk with some of the folks that are involved with the Charlottesville-Winnebago sister city relationship, and decided to put forth Six and a Half Street in Fifeville as the street to be honorarily renamed, in part because that's where the Ghana Association of Charlottesville was founded and still is established, and in part because of the direct historical connection between West Africa and the fact that this is a neighborhood where many descendants of enslaved West Africans have settled over the years. So that was his thinking in coming up with that particular street. The disconnect that you referred to earlier is that in offering up this specific street, he did not go back to the Sister City Commission. And I think some of the early dialogue around the honorary street names had, was centered around doing them all in the downtown area. And so there was a little bit of a disconnect there. However, ultimately, it's not the Sister City Commission's job to choose which streets get renamed, it's city council's job. And so that's pretty much where we are. You know, I hope it's not a big controversy because this is actually a really positive thing. We're hoping to have a ceremony in early March. So there's some time sensitivity to this. We're trying to have an event in honor of Ghana's Independence Day, first week of March, invite some Ghanaian officials to participate, have a really positive event there on Six and a Half Street, so.
Thank you.
Sure.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? No? Okay. So I'll close Community Matters. So we'll take a 10-minute break?
Sure.
All right.
All right. Next up, we have the honorary street naming Winneba Way.
This item was pulled from the consent agenda, and the agenda was amended for it to be discussed now. I believe, Mayor Walker, you wanted to proceed with a vote tonight. And Counselor Galvin and Counselor Hill wanted to defer. Is that correct?
That's my understanding, based on the recommendation of the Chair of the Sister Cities Commission. I received an email from her today. She said that this was presented prematurely, and that it needed to still get a vote from the Sister City Commission. And so I just offer that as the fact that, yes, this council can choose to vote down a recommendation of any of its committees and boards. We do that with the Planning Commission. But we do not inject ourselves into their process first, before they get a chance to vote on something, and then give us a set of recommendations. So I read what was requested on the part of the Chair of the Sister Cities Committee, and it made sense that we would be consistent with process. Otherwise, why have advisory committees?
Okay, so from my understanding, we had this set for this agenda. This was removed from the agenda. I wasn't aware that it was removed until I received a call from Dave Norris asking why. It was off. At that time, I spoke with Dr. Richardson about why it was removed. And the concern there regarding that Justin Reed, who presented the application to us, had not assumed that it had been approved since they discussed it in the commission to submit it, from my understanding. And so he submitted it. There are, the issue regarding returning, from my understanding, to the committee, commission, is that they would like for a downtown street versus, the Chair is proposing that a downtown street based on a decision that was made when they looked at the sister city as a whole. And the Charlottesville-Winneba Foundation and the president of that association, they have proposed that the Six and a Half Street, street naming, is the honorary street. So the time sensitivity, as it was expressed to me, was that they need to make sure that this is a go and have individuals in Ghana make sure that they have their travel visas. I know when we were over there last year, we didn't have a delegation here last year, because some of them were having, or this year, having issues with getting visas. So that, and for that to coincide with the March date for Ghana's independence.
And Mayor Walker, all that, that's what I would have thought that the Sister Cities would be discussing, commission. And so, I mean, I just, I'm just saying that I, other councilors, may please feel free to weigh in, but I'm.
I just was trying, honestly, when the communications came, like, it just, it seemed to me that last week, the reason that was pulled from our agenda is because it became known by the commission that that had been done, and that hadn't been the expected process that they were planning to follow. And so when they discovered that, they asked our staff to pull it, because it wasn't ready to be on our agenda, which is not atypical. When things aren't ready, things get deferred. And so I just was trying to just acknowledge that that is the process that we followed. If they do not want something on our agenda, then we shouldn't be entertaining it until it's come forward in the appropriate channels. And so I'm just trying to understand, like, are you saying that this is separate from the normal Sister Cities Commission's scope? Because at the same time, like, I was one of the first ones to say I support us having this discussion, but this is before I understood that some things were not ready to be put in front of council at this point, because it hadn't been in front of the whole commission. So that they meet on Thursday. I'm trying, are there ways that we could acknowledge that they are meeting, and that decision is up to them? And if, but then it would just come back to us? Or are there things we could do now to kind of send that message that if they end up voting in favor of where we are, where this was laid out in this agenda, that that goes through? And if not, they have to come back to us? Anyway, I'm open to that. I just want to make sure that we give it due process.
And so I understand, but the only person that we received feedback from pulling it has been one individual, and that's why I asked.
That person was writing on behalf of the commission, and I have heard from no one else directly on this matter.
And I have a question too, Mayor Walker, because of Ms. Thomas, who is on the Sister City Commission. Because I understand they had a, didn't they have a strategic planning session at one point? And so, you know, in terms of, I'm not sure what the scope of that strategic planning session was, but I would have thought that they would have looked at what parts of the city they want to have streets named after sister cities.
That wasn't part of the discussion. It didn't go into that much detail. What we discussed was goals for each of the sister cities. And it was mentioned that the street naming was one of Winneba's goals at that time.
So what was the conclusion on which street? Like, nobody's answered the question.
So for, just for me, hearing both sides of the argument, and then also hearing Mr. Norris's explanation, I'm wondering if it would just be plausible for us if there isn't support to move forward tonight with just Graham can get, with, at the very minimum, as Mr. Norris alluded to, former Mayor Norris alluded to, just go ahead in saying that we approve such contention upon the commission voting on such on Thursday. Because I don't think this is something that we need to not do now, and then let them vote, and then come back. We can just proceed forth with it now. And then I also think, just if I may, the second part that I think is important, I know that the other groups, or, excuse me, the Chair of the group was saying that they wanted all the streets to be downtown. Although, you know, there is a cultural aspect of this, because when you think about where they're requesting the street to be in one of the more predominant African-American neighborhoods, I think that does hold weight. So we need to be cognizant of such, and I think that's also been, that's also been expressed. So again, if there isn't three votes for us to proceed forth tonight, which I hope that there were, but if not, it's okay, then if we could at least, at the very minimum, say, continue upon their vote on Thursday, they finish out. I think that gets everybody where we need to be.
And I absolutely, like, I think that was the point of the discussion, is that there are different perspectives on this. But I think it was more that a year ago or so, they had kind of set this kind of vision for the Sister Cities renaming, and then Bezonsan had theirs done. And I think they just want to have a chance for the whole group to kind of convene and discuss, you know, is this a different path we're going to take for this? And if that's the case, it's totally fine. I don't have, I mean, I leave that up to the groups who are weighing in on that, to inform council of that. I just think that we've been asked to give that group the chance to have that conversation. And if there's a way they can have that conversation, and we can take some kind of, you know, leading action tonight, I just don't know what that would look like.
Well, I think it looks like what was been recommended by Mr. Norris, the leading action.
Well, I have an alternative motion. If I may, Mayor Walker, you can vote it up or down. I would like to make a motion to table this discussion, this decision until January, after which the Sister City Commission would have an opportunity to make, to have a discussion and formally present their recommendation to us, with the direction that we would like to increase the areas of the city in which the names, the streets can be, in which the names for sister cities can be applied. So it's not strictly downtown. So give both, so my motion- So give both, so my motion is to table it until January with the direction to the commission that we would like them to expand the geography within which they can apply their Sister City street names. That is my motion.
But isn't it time sensitive in terms of, as Mayor Walker alluded to with the visas and whatnot?
You could make it the first meeting in January.
But cannot.
Go ahead, Mayor Walker.
So Mr. Blair, can we, do we have to vote on that now or can there be further discussion?
There can be further discussion, there's a motion in a second.
Okay. In terms of, did you all read the change between that Kena sent out, Ms. Thomas sent out, with Justin explaining, Justin Reed who submitted the?
When was that sent?
Sunday evening. Sunday at 11:00 H.M.
So Justin says, "I'm just seeing your messages, I'm more than willing to apologize and explain this one to the commission. I suspect that Mayor Walker's insisting this vote take place tonight because it's last, the last meeting of the 16-19 anniversary year, or it's an easy and positive vote for the outgoing counselors to end on. Unfortunately, I'm unable to make it to tonight's city council meeting. I know there's been a long, been some concern about the downtown mall feeling inaccessible or unwelcoming for working class and lower income residents. At Thursday's meeting, I was planning to argue that having the street names throughout this city increases our reach and visibility."
Well, it just sounds like there's a conversation that's happening on Thursday that's important to happen, so that there's a clear direction coming from the commission.
My motion still stands.
So I'll just comment again on the fact that, again, the process, when you all are talking about process, that it didn't occur. In this email chain, it says that Ms. Thomas sent out to Terry, who I traveled with to France last year, and she emailed the two of you to discuss her concerns and she's the only commission member who has sent any emails where we have two other commission members who have said something differently and did not reach out to me at all. I do have some comments on why, but this, I'm going to keep those today.
But as I said, I also didn't hear from other people myself. I only heard from that one person. So it's a different person, but I only heard from one person.
But if the process had been.
Just tonight, yes.
Yeah, and then there's an email. But if the process that we are supposed to follow in terms of just getting items on the agenda or pulling them, which I do in my role, have say over, that, I didn't have that conversation. So putting something back on the agenda as it was already planned is also something. And then just being open to what is being asked of us and Nana, who is responsible for there even being a Sister City with Winnebago, their concerns too. So even going back to this meeting, unless there are other people who I'm sure we would have heard from with as much feedback that we received on this, if the intent is for the Chair to be able to tell them where the streets should go, that seems to be the only conflict here.
I don't think the Chair is trying to tell them where it wants it's supposed to go. I think she's just saying that they haven't had the conversation as a full commission on this topic. And Mr. Norris even confirmed that to me. It has not happened yet. So if that hasn't happened yet, I would rather us just allow them to have that conversation and just, like, in the next couple of weeks, we'll be reconvening back here. I think there's strong support for this. It's not about not wanting to do this, it's about wanting to make sure that we're approving a recommendation that is aligned with what the, what the commission is seeking, or maybe not even approving it.
Mayor Walker, I'd like to call the question, my motion.
I agree.
All right, please vote. And what's the motion?
The motion is to table the decision, the vote, on the naming of the street until meeting in January with the direction to the Sister Cities Commission that we would like them to broaden the geography of the area within which they will have streets named after Sister Cities. Okay, that, we're just.
Please vote. All right, it's three to two. All right, next we have the adoption of the transit development plan. And Wes, this is why representation matters. I just want to point that out. Thank you. We're ready.
Oh, there he is.
Yeah, we're ready for you. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Manager, Members of Council. My name is Garland Williams, Director of Transit. In regards to TDP, it is a state requirement that each transit agency receives funding from the state every six years, complete a transit development plan. CAT completed this plan in 2018, has not had the plan adopted by the governing board, which is the city council. This is a means for us to make sure the state knows that our plans, our operational plans and our capital plans regarding getting state funding. So this is one of the things that we have to do to make sure that we can continue to get funding from the state. So, I'm asking that the city council adopt this plan.
Could you speak to, just you attempting to just get something passed by us that was already developed and your intention on review of it and what that looks like?
Sure. The plan was, it looks like it took about 18 months or so to complete. It was completed in September of 2018. It should have been gone through the process, should have come to city council for review, knowing that there are recommendations in there for expansion or changing of the routes. And as the governing board, you're technically responsible for adoption of those changes. What we're working through now is this plan does not lock council in to anything financially or operationally. It is a planning document that allows the state to plan in the future, over the next 10 years, about where funding needs are met. What we can do is, this is kind of our foundational document and treat it as such. Every year annually, we would do an update, we would come forward with an update to modify any of the things that are actually in the transit development plan and move forward. That's the means by which the state has allowed other transit agencies throughout the state to do so and we will follow the same procedure. So we're not locked into anything that's actually in the plan, but it is a way for the state to kind of govern as to what our thinking was at the time when the plan was developed.
Right. I move a death resolution to accept the transit development plan.
Second, any further discussion? All right, please vote. Carrie's five to zero. Next we have McGuffey Arts Center Annual Update.
Good evening, council. Good evening, Mayor Walker. My name is Giselle Gatreau. I'm an artist and a resident artist and the president of McGuffey Art Center. I'm here to present you with our annual report this evening and I thank you for your time. I'll get through this quickly so you can go on to the after celebration tonight.
You mean the after-party?
The after-party, exactly.
Oh, I didn't know that was the next surprise.
So give me 10 minutes of your time, I'll move through this quickly for you. Okay. Since 1975, McGuffey Art Center has been a place for our community to connect through the arts. At 45, McGuffey is one of the oldest artists-run art centers in the United States. We have 46 renting members, 108 associate members. We have six artists in our incubator program. Each renting member keeps their studio open to the public, they give tours and do community outreach. This has resulted in, last year we had over 400 tour participants who came through our building free, basically these were school and community groups that came through on tours. And then our community outreach continues to grow. As we move forward, our goals are to continue to expand our reach and to grow to be a place where all of Charlottesville convenes, to connect through the arts. This is what our operations look like. We are a not-for-profit Virginia corporation that is governed like a cooperative association. We have an elected executive council comprised of artist members. We have a small, paid, part-time staff. This is our, we have an operations manager, a bookkeeper and gallery assistants, they're all part-time. Each renting member serves on a committee. The committees are what could keep the art center running. We do everything in-house. So we run our gallery and our openings, publicity, website, tours, classes and outreach. Of the many things that we do, here are just a few of my favorites. I love that, I love the exhibitions that we host at McGuffey. We have over five gallery spaces and every month, we rotate those exhibitions through. So we have a great gallery committee that comes through and they launch a professional exhibition every month. We are also committed to hosting non-member exhibitions. These are groups that look to us to host their recurring shows. This includes the Festival of the Book, UVA Sculpture and Post-Bacalaureate Program. And one of my personal favorites is the Regional High School Exhibition, in part because I've got two teenagers. And what I see every year is this energy of these, of the kids coming in and the pride they take of seeing their work on McGuffey's walls and the legitimacy that that gives them with their own work and the pride that comes from that. And then the flip side of that is then those kids get to put McGuffey Art Center on their resumes when they're applying for college. So that's one of my personal favorite shows. Earlier this year, we were honored to present a month-long celebration of the Black Creative Community during Black History Month. We dedicated our building to showcasing Black visual and performing artists in Charlottesville, several who had their debut exhibits at McGuffey. This resulted in the visual artists that we invited going on to apply for and becoming members of McGuffey. I was really excited about that. The slide on the right exemplifies some community projects that begin with McGuffey and continue to grow. Dave Bersansky and Estella Naught, who is here tonight, these are musicians at McGuffey who teach classes. Their intention was to reach out into the Latino community and they have seen their projects with, which began at McGuffey, grow into important cultural events. This includes Day of the Dead and the Sabrosa Festival. This multimedia project highlighted in our report, won a grant from the Virginia Humanities, which bridges traditional music and stories of Latin America with traditional Appalachian music. One of the other things that we do that I love are these opportunities for learning at McGuffey. In addition to tours and artist demos, we also offer classes and workshops and life drawing. McGuffey artists are professionals in their field. They teach a range of classes, which encompasses a range of disciplines and a range of ages from the very young to seniors. We also offer life drawing and this offers another opportunity for non-members to come in and learn. And then last year, we had over 60 students attend free of charge with our scholarship program. Another thing I'm really excited about is our incubator program. It's a one-year residency for emerging artists now in its sixth year. We essentially took one of our studio spaces, divided it into six, into a shared space for six artists. And basically, during that one-year residency, there's a sense of collaboration and mentorship with McGuffey artists, opportunities for professional development and exhibition opportunities. At the end of that residency, most of them go on to apply for membership at McGuffey and then they go on to do really great things as well. And this particular program continues to get a lot of interest, so we've had a huge surge in interest and applicants in this program. I want to touch on our community partners. I've already spoken about a few of them or touched on some. And as I mentioned, McGuffey artists take, they, each McGuffey artist is asked to do community outreach. And so, a lot of the names on this list of these groups are a direct result of McGuffey artists taking that intention seriously. And some of my favorite ones that are on that list, I've got the Flow Ravanna River Festival and it's, I think they've just completed their third year. And what I love about that one is that that takes McGuffey artists out of the building and into the community, into the community and engaging with the public in a really dynamic way. It's a great festival. International Neighbors is a fantastic program where we meant, we work collaboratively with that group to offer classes and workshops with the refugee community and kids. The Alzheimer's Association is essentially a group of Alzheimer's patients and their caregivers who come into McGuffey and do art on a regular basis with McGuffey artists. And then another one of my favorites, just one more, is the, right across from my studio is Lily Williams, who also is part of Chi-Hamba. She, every single Wednesday, she works with the Albemarle Schools Post-High Program, which serves, which is essentially young adults and teens who have medium to severe disabilities. So every week, those teens come in and they do music therapy and drumming and stuff in her space. And it's right across from my studio, so every single Wednesday, I hear this joyous sound coming from there. So those are some of my favorites. Finally, I wanted to kind of cover our financial snapshot. I think one of the keys to McGuffey's longevity and sustainability is being both fiscally responsible and staying within our footprint. We have a lean operating budget and we, like I said, we try to do everything in-house. Our operating budget is about $184,000. I'm really proud of the fact that we came in about 98% to 99% of our projected expenses and income last year. About 74% of our income comes from artist studio rent and then after that, our sales commissions and other dues and fees. And out of our expenses, it's sort of split between our wages for our part-time staff and our rent and utilities. And then after that, it's taking care of the building and offering our, and continuing to support our programming. And finally, as we look into the next decade, our goals are to bring more art to people, more people to art. We'd love to hear any ideas that you have on how to connect McGuffey and the community. I want to thank council for your time and invite you to come to First Fridays, open studios, take a class, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
How many folks here are from, looks like, looks like a lot.
Thank you all. My kids certainly take classes there and I enjoy my time there for First Fridays when we can get there and just a really great asset to the community.
Great, thank you. I'm really proud of the fact that we are looking at close to our 50th anniversary and it is truly one of the oldest artists-run art organizations in the country and that is because of our partnership with the city. So I feel like we're doing something right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much and thank you for coming.
Thank you very much and thank you for coming.
All right, any other comments? All right.
You're allowed to leave if you'd like.
Next we have-
Sorry, Chris. The auditors are coming.
Next, we have the audit report for fiscal year 2019 by City Auditor Brown Edwards and Company.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council. My name is Chris Cullinan, I'm the City's Director of Finance. State Code requires all local governments have their finances audited annually by an independent certified public accountant in accordance with the specifications of the Auditor of Public Accounts. State Code also requires the City's auditor present their findings to the governing body at a public session. Tonight, Megan Argent-Bright, CPA, Director from Brown Edwards and Company, is here to present their audit report for the city for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth of 2019. I'm pleased to report that the city has received an unmodified or clean audit opinion. The City's general fund did end fiscal year 2019 with a surplus. The Finance Department and the Budget Office are currently preparing the year-end appropriation of which the unallocated portion is a part of that calculation in addition to ongoing appropriations and carryover funds. And as was mentioned before, that will be brought to Council at their January twenty-first, 2020 meeting for their consideration. I'm also pleased to report that the city completed FY19 in compliance with all of our financial management policies and we have met the reporting requirements and deadlines with both the state and federal governments. I'd also like to publicly acknowledge and thank Glenn Pack, the City's Comptroller, and his staff and team for their hard work on this annual effort. And with that, I'd like to introduce Megan Argent-Bright, CPA with Brown Edwards, to present their audit report.
Hello.
Hello. Good evening.
Thank you very much for having me. It's required, but thank you anyway. All the same. I will repeat what Mr. Cullinan said, that we did issue an unmodified, clean opinion. That's the one that you want. I will say that the interesting thing about the City's CAFER is that, well, number one, it's prepared by the city, which is becoming less and less common. And it's quite a feat to do a CAFER. What's even, I think, more special about the way the city prepares their CAFER is that the Finance Department, really as a team, does it. I have two other clients who do their own CAFERS and it's a one-person operation. And here at the city, the Finance Department really does kind of divvy it up and make it a little bit more bearable and really works as a team to get it done. So, a little, and I won't talk very long, but a little background, the audit process is a long process. They probably feel like it's never-ending. We come in April and we do your single audit, which is where we test your federal awards. We tested five programs this year. And that's City and schools together, we tested five programs. We look at internal controls, we do not test internal controls, but we are required to gain an understanding of them. So we do that in April as well. We do some, at the schools, we do some VRS testing that's required by the state. And then we give them a little bit of a break and we come back and do final fieldwork in October, whereas we're really diving in and looking at the numbers. In the CAFER, a couple of things to look at, you know, the first like forty pages of the CAFER is really summarized, forty, forty pages of summary to look at if you were to read. And it kind of gives a little bit of bragging time to say like what the city's accomplished during the year. And it's the first letter, the transmittal letter, will really give the opportunity for that. We also issue a letter on internal controls. With that letter is some information on upcoming GESB standards, super interesting. What you need, super interesting to me, what you guys need to know is that we are in talks with finance about how those are going to be implemented in the city and what the plans are to roll them out smoothly. And then also, there's a letter to those charged with governance, mostly boilerplate, pretty much explains the audit process. But attached to that letter is what we call the Management's Representation Letter. When we come in and do an audit, we ask about a thousand questions. And this letter pretty much says, I guess we told you everything that we know to the best of our ability. And the management at the city and the schools and the EDA all sign off on that letter. So, that's all I have.
So you do this process in parallel for both the schools and the city?
Yeah. And the EDA as well. But we present to them separately.
I have a question. And I guess I never thought of it this way, but is there any downside to the organization doing their own CAFER and for the public, CAFER means Comprehensive Audit Finance Report?
I would say no. What I've found is that a lot of clients who do their own CAFER know it really, really well. Like, they live this. They live it every day. And like I said, I come in in April and I come in in October. And I know a lot about local governments, but the City's Finance Department knows a lot, a lot about the city's finances. I don't know if you have any doubt about that.
I would echo the same thing. When you can go through our report and we can tie out every single one of those numbers in the report back to the financial management system. We know exactly what goes into it, where it comes from, not just for that year, but year over year over year. We're able to do that analyses and have that level of accountability and responsibility for that information.
And what's the timeline at which the, those new annual finance reports are posted?
Actually, that's one thing that we did not get done today. It's actually completed-
Someone asked me about it, so.
Unfortunately, the person who is going to post it for us was unexpectedly out today. But we are going to get that up in the morning.
This week, okay.
It's completed. We'll have hard copies available. You might remember in past years, we've had hard copies, but based on the feedback from Council, you didn't want those documents, you preferred to have them online. And so, we will have a handful of hard copies available, but the online version will be up tomorrow.
And the estimated surplus will be known when?
That's actually the very next effort we're underway right now.
Just trying to manage expectations of public, it's been curious.
I would say this, I think the results are going to be similar to past years with revenues doing better than expected and expenditures being less than was budgeted. I hesitate to put a number out there right now.
No, not even a number, mess up timing when you might think you might.
But we, we need to step through that analysis and be very thoughtful and thorough with that before we put that number out there.
I have a couple. One, I would like a hard copy, I just, to mark this up. But the, there was a section in here on misstatements. Are they from the previous year or are they from corrected and uncorrected misstatements?
Yeah, those are from this year. Yeah. And there was a couple of reasons. The first one was accrued interest. It's a year-end only entry and it wasn't done for a couple of the funds. And so, we realized that and made, the entry was made to correct it. And then the other one was that a timing issue of when invoices come in. And so, they needed to be put in capital assets and put in accounts payable. And so, those couple of invoices were noticed as well during the audit process.
And then the uncorrected ones, did they counsel each other out?
Yeah, the uncorrected one is one of those, it's been there for, since we became the auditors, it's technically the right way to do it, but at the end of the year, your bottom line is not different because of it. So, but we have to let you know about it. But if you look back at the last three years of your, this letter, that same comment will be there.
And I would certainly love to tell you that, you know, we obviously don't like to see these, but when we do get them, it makes us that much better and we improve our processes that much more and make sure that we don't repeat those. And that's one of the key things they look at every year, is they'll go back to the previous year and see, hey, we noticed these things last year, did you follow through and fix these things? And so, those are the first things they go to and we know they're going to do that.
Any other question? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other business? All right, open it back up for matters by the public.
Good evening. I just wanted to address my comment to Dr. Bellamy, Dr. Signer, I never call lawyers doctor, but anyway, and Ms. Galvin.
He has a PhD and a JD, so.
That's true.
He's Dr. Doctor.
Been brought up before Dr. Bellamy brought up tonight, but thank you.
And my comment would be this, first of all, thank you for what I know as I anticipate my own four-year adventure, what has been your four-year or eight-year adventure. But to comment on one thing in particular, and that is that although I have not come to a lot of these meetings, I've watched every one of them in the last four years on video. And I've been impressed over and over by one very important thing. And that is that I think the three of you, as well as the other two who are not retiring, and I don't mean to exclude anybody here, have always, in my view, been governed by and led by a sincere desire to do the best for Charlottesville. I may disagree with you individually, but I have never had the thought that you were operating out of anything other than an absolutely honorable view of how you think you can improve the city. And that's a very, that's about the highest compliment I think anybody could pay to a public servant. And I want to pay that specifically to the three of you, to the five of you, and to say that I think Charlottesville, through some very difficult times in the last two and a half years in particular, has been well-served. So, thank you for your service.
I am back again. I didn't, I didn't want to be, honestly. But the McGuffey presentation, did you guys pay attention to those pictures? Because something really startled me in those pictures. There were no African-American kids in those pictures. That bothers me. And then for you to say, oh, you know, my kids go there and they enjoy programs. Listen, we cannot and we will not be a city for all with programs like that. With a presentation like that, that should bother everybody up on this podium right now. I mean, I'm boiling in the back, like, where's the black kids? Then the man that was with the lady that gave the presentation in the hallway just said art is a middle-class activity. That's what this man just said in the hallway. Art is a middle-class activity. Well, that's clearly what they showed on the presentation, clearly. Because you ain't see no kids from Garrett, you ain't see no kids from Hardy Drive, you ain't see no kids from Prospect, you ain't see no kids from that one low-income community. And here y'all pushing stuff back for a street to be named in a black neighborhood for a African sister city. Like, this bothers me with people like y'all, seriously. Because you award stuff like that as long as it's okay for you, right? As long as it's okay for you. And this man just literally said, I mean, I am so pissed off that this man was standing out there saying art is a middle-class activity. I wish somebody told my cousins, friends, children, whatever, that they can't do art because it's a middle-class activity? What? But y'all fund stuff like this. They want black people to come down here asking for money. It's a whole problem. We don't even got to ask for money, we could just simply ask for a street to be named. And it's a whole, we have to expand the geographic, what did you say? Geographic of the streets?
That's to allow the location they're requesting, Ms. Hudson, outside of the downtown area.
Yeah, we don't need nothing downtown for black people.
That's what I'm saying, they're asking to have it expanded.
Let me talk, I got three minutes, boo. You can, you can answer when my three minutes up. Listen, we, black people, don't need nothing named downtown because this downtown mall has not been for us since urban renewal. Do you understand that part? You need to come see my movie and you might learn something. Hopefully, it'll change your heart too. And you'll see what the city has done to black people. Because see, y'all keep playing. And you know, yeah, it's the time of gift and whatever, but I'm gonna go ahead and give you a little bit more to go into the new year with. Because see, we got a whole new year coming, so you're gonna have to deal with me even more. You don't, which is even more why you should have made the right decision tonight and allowed them to get that street name. But you ain't doing with the little lady over there in France, though. Y'all don't play with her like that, but you play with Nana and Dave. But y'all don't play with her, because y'all rubbing shoulders and stuff. Listen, black people need nothing downtown. Black people need to be included. Black people need to have their own. Without you or you or anybody else, and I hope they sitting in this room that's coming on Council thinking that we don't, because we paid our damn way in this city. Now, give it to us.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
I got one more thing to say, ask. I just want to ask everybody a question, because it bothers me. I invited all of y'all to the hundred and fifty-sixth anniversary at my church that nobody from City Council showed. One person could have came and represented and didn't care. Even the lawyer could have came. I mean, I'm shocked, this is a historical church, a hundred and fifty-six years.
Well, I told you I wasn't available.
I know you told me straight up, you wasn't coming. But I would love to have seen somebody from the city to come and represent. Y'all, you know where I'm coming from, now think about that. It's a historical church.
Scott Vandy, I live on Cherry Avenue. Was that of the members leaving the council? I'm just wondering, was probably in your top ten of hardest decisions to make, was that about moving the statues? And there's a reason I'm asking this. Given the fact that it went the way it did and is still going, hopefully, did it also, did the thought probably occur that maybe, just maybe, it could also declare it a public nuisance?
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? All right, meeting adjourned.